11111111141, 141, 15th Avenue, Beston Development Company LLC. Mr. Hale.
Mr. Chairman, Board Director, Steven Hale, Hail and Hail, Presenting the Application for LLC. This is an application for site plan. Essentially, limited to the installation of new driveway access, closing all of the existing driveways. There's actually one on the actual driveway. They're closing those curbs and also for the installation of traffic light on North Avenue. There'll be no changes to function or operation of the site. Essentially, this is being done to improve access and safety. The property is located in the capacity road to development area. And the site plan portion of this application is not requiring deviations from the current plan. We do know, we just received these comments from part of consultants who compared to the director of the project with the bigger neighbor and their representatives. And again, the key to this application is to provide more and more safe access to the site, to and from the site. That's an overview of the, I think, project as submitted. And preliminary questions are all from my viewers.
Are there any questions for the opening?
Yes, I'm going to go with you.
Hi, this is Victor Benager, City Planner.
My name is David Piddes. Business address? Address is 235 Hershey Avenue, B.I.R.C.H. O.P. in Cranford, 07016. That's the business address.
Goodness, take your position with the app and best of help.
My title is President, that's a family business, affiliated development company.
And I know the board is above the site, or the board view of the site by. You can't say that. As I stated, I know the board is above the site.
Sure, the site is an approximately 14 acre site on North Avenue. Our families own the site for approximately 50 years. It is currently leased and has been leased for many years to Columbia Container and for the storage of shipping containers.
And will there be any change in the use or operation? Now, we have someone from Columbia here, who's the owner of the property, he uses our facility. Do you have any discussion? Now, I've indicated my opening in the old patent part of this test file. It's claimed to be board the nature of the site plan application, why any driveway and traffic light is being proposed.
Sure. In a nutshell, the new driveway and traffic light is being proposed to enhance safety as in entering the site, particularly left entrance, and to increase efficiency of the site. North Avenue, I would say, very busy for that, and the site is very close to the business. And it can be difficult to get out of the site, sometimes what that does when the user on the site, users here test by this. They have several vehicles standing back on the side.
Yes, several vehicles. And the general location of the new driveway?
Uh, that is where there are two curbs that is in currently, and experts that provide more detailed testimony on these points. We are proposing to close both of those existing curbs and move the entries farther from the intersection of the passing road.
And actually aligning with our street course is pretty different?
That's correct, so we're aligning with the existing driveway and access street to make that access.
And even though we letter from our consultants about involving the board authority to ultimately be issued with the non-issues, we've had plenty of discussions today regarding that.
Sure, we have many discussions with the board already going back for about 18 months. I believe we first met with them in August of 2010. Even though we understand that the frontage among our property is under the city's jurisdiction of the authorities, we just thought it would be purpose and appropriate to leave the new authority to gain their input. And after any phone meetings, they did express conceptual agreement to go forward with designing a traffic light advised driver.
And you have an opportunity for you to read the letter dated December 29, 2010, from our consultants.
Yes.
And subject to the testimony of the airport services, officials will try to find any of those curbs that are in the area. And I think you received one of the departmental comment from airport services which recommended this project. At this time, I should go for the question of this witness.
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Piddes.
Mr. Piddes, this property has, as you said, has been in the family for a number of years. Does nothing need any change in the use of the property?
At this point, that's correct.
Okay. Your facility receives containers from the east, which is the waterfront, okay? And when you're, if this application for the wider driveway, which by the way makes sense, you'd be on east and west incoming and outgoing for where these, whatever store these containers, they leave from your facility to a retail, whatever, depending on the container. So they, they come in from the east more than likely, come into the waterfront, stored until they're then bill the lady and all back out again, and then they go west. So you need to address left and right, east and west, correct?
Correct.
It makes sense, because apparently right now, you're coming in and off of IKEA Drive, correct?
Actually, no, it's not correct, but we do not have access to all IKEA Drive, which is a right.
You come off IKEA?
Oh, no you're not.
You come off this little narrow traffic lane?
And the only access is all over that.
So by doing what you, your requesting from this board to approve, only because it's a non-performing, that's why you're here. Because the property itself has never been performing to what it uses. So you have to go back to what plane or whatever board or justice to get the okay, correct?
I think my answer is we're here because I was advised by council engineer that's here.
Victor, is that correct?
Yeah, it provides over the ordinance that requires, you have to start kind of disturbing to your site, and you have to come forward with the board.
Okay.
So the usage of this test file is not changing much at all.
Okay.
Because the ordinance serving makes them out of spirit, what is in front of you.
Yeah, that's the way I figure it, but it does make sense. You need a good one to get in that area, wider driveway, and it's no, you have no visual problems either east or west when that IKEA Drive comes out. There's nothing obstructing the issue either way.
That's correct.
Okay, so you're currently coming out on the IKEA, I thought maybe you're just going off IKEA to relax the program. Well, this makes sense, as you know, wider driveway, all the way around will be a safer issue than you're currently working on.
Maybe.
Is that, this is why you're investing the money, because of the safety factor. And makes sense to me. Victor, you have any problems?
I'll just reform the board that the, this street is a city of its own. And normally with the city of the roadways, we review with a signal proposed. I do avoid thorough depth analysis of the trips in and the trips out.
I think we talked about this many, many years ago, when they were building warehouses across the street.
Yes.
About the investment of these areas. In fact, I think that 10 years ago, we talked about that.
Yes.
There was a pumping station on the corner, and we spoke about that.
And what the applicant is dying is per discussion, their, who their driveway is. It's letting you directly across.
Yes, I feel like across.
So it makes a lot of sense.
Victor, this, it's absolutely, it makes so much sense, I don't know why I'm here, but it makes so much sense.
But I just wanted to point to board this, anything from the turnpike even further over North Avenue, this area, even though it's a municipal road, there's a special computer program that the port authority has a model of the entire port network approach, along Langley Drive, which is all area of Elizabeth, they have a computer model. It's specific to Port North, Port Elizabeth. And the applicant has met with port authority, they're analyzing traffic signal. Even though we have the final say, the city of Elizabeth, we need to hear back on what their findings are. If they come up with their findings, we'll have to discuss this. But only their findings in their computer model show that this is a benefit, that the detrimental conditions.
Correct.
They'll hopefully give us a letter stating that they have no objection.
Yeah, well, we talked about this years ago, Victor, about why we went down for a, for at least wider and turn, making wider for some of the traffic that had been generated.
So I would like, if any approval here, we continue upon, unless some board of no objection from that port authority. Would the applicant have a problem with that?
No, we would not. In fact, the only thing in the letter from our consultants that I would comment on was number four, the general comments we've been talking about taking approval from the port authority, I think, I think what we discussed with them is better characterized as a non-injection.
Yes, because the D E P also issued those types of letters. Sorry about that. So I have no problem modifying my letter stating that not approval, a letter of no objection. Either approval or a letter of no objection, because it is a municipal road. They really came to approval, they could just say we don't object.
Okay, the question that I have, and the board has responded, firstly, how far is it from the quarter of Kataski? Kataski or North, I see a drive to this new driveway.
As far as it can be, I live, I live our experts testify, I still don't know.
And the other question I have during the discussion with port authority is, this look like it's going to be cycling on a normal basis where all of the news when a truck is ready to come out, don't go in, it's going to be something in the roadway that will change why when there's a truck going to make left or right.
In fact, we're not going to have that discussion with the port authority. It may just be a loose control.
Right, because it's very early, no matter how far away, it's going to turn the force back together. That's a very distant order. The last thing you want is trucks backed up, forced Kataski Road, and light at that point.
Yes, the final designs, experts have not finalized yet, but we support that.
We're in the port authority issue, we're in the end.
Yes.
Excuse me, Victor, you had a cute little word in here about water on both sides, the crossing of the side of the road. Is that responsible that the applicant would?
Well, the applicant, we're just talking about both sides of the driveway. Not that the other side was out there, so I don't remember. In fact, the applicant engineer. Okay. And in fact, the applicant engineer has submitted revised sketches of a layout showing a couple of additional endless. We don't get any pounding conditions that way.
Okay.
Has a very bright professional.
Any other commissioners having evidence?
I'm sure some, yes. I feel that's such, I feel that's what the pipes, I guess, we talk about, what's, what's up?
Yeah, they're, we're looking to have storm endless on both sides of the driveway.
Okay.
So we don't, so to try to cut down the amount of pounding, puddling that occurs out there. Because the road is pretty flat, port authority is struck in that roadway resurfaced it, and it is quite flat out there, so. The applicant engineer has added a little bit less, just a little added factor of safety. All on this side, all near driveway.
And type of catch bases that should be installed there, if we, if I can, any excess that we can do?
Yeah, in fact, you know, they're called catch bases, they do catch some of the debris that we do get inside, so they're supposed to move some of the small debris down.
Alright, thank you, sir. Any other questions, Mr. Piddes? Before you call, we have another witness, yes? Before you call, I suggest we have a second five minute process.
Would you state your name, cover your name, your address, please?
My name is John Armstrong. I'm from Columbia Container Services. I address at 106 Allen Road, Liberty Corner, New Jersey. Columbia.
And Columbia Container Works tenement's property?
Correct.
And communicate your position with that company and how you're doing.
Yeah, I'm the executive vice president, I've been here since 2002.
And can you briefly describe the operation of Columbia, this type of question?
Yeah, it's a shipping container, storage and repair facility. And it would deal with a number exclusively with empty containers, empty cargo containers. A customer will bring them and they'll either repair it, what need be repaired, what need be stored, picked up later. We don't own any of the containers.
And you don't get any containers directly from the container?
We get no full containers, all empties.
And what are your hours of operation?
We operate from 7:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon. Occasionally, the customer will ask us to keep gate open later, but it's typically 7:00.
And quite a number of employees?
Got seven clerical administrative employees and about 20 I L A union laborers. 20 I L A union members in a national insurance situation.
And this question was asked in the department review letter, related to prospecting on board, if you have your trips in and out of the site.
Yeah, obviously, change in the year that they started buying the port, but the last couple of years has been less than 150 gate moves per day. That's in 75 and 75 hour.
And briefly explain the layout of the site and how that's going to affect your site's operation?
Yeah, I have the truck will come in, then have the container, and it'll be instructed to go to a particular stack. I know which customer's container is, like I said, we don't own any containers. The customer will have various stacks, 40 foot containers, 20 foot container. And then it's working out again by whether it needs to be repaired, doesn't need to be repaired, has been repaired. So each customer will have maybe six or seven stacks. They'll drop the container, and then he exits the facility. He's coming to pick up a container, he's coming to pick up a container, he has to go through our gate facility, and be directed to the container pickup, and then he leaves with an empty container.
And as part of this site plan with the new driveway and the post light, will any of that change or any of its function, employees or other devices change?
No, operation will not change, it's just going to be a safer operation.
And that is, again, my next question. From your standpoint as the tenant and operator of the site, what will the proposed driveway or proposed traffic light have an impact as far as your side?
Yeah, well, we've been very lucky at that site. That is a very difficult term to begin, it's made out of, it's extremely difficult passenger car, and it's also difficult as a truck. We've had some accidents over the years over, we haven't had any where to kill, I don't know. But it definitely will make a very big difference in how technically coming in on the site.
So therefore, obviously, you feel that this site will benefit the safety access and that?
Yeah, I mean, it definitely is.
Thank you, I have no further questions, Mr. Armstrong, this time.
Commissioners, do you have questions for Mr. Armstrong?
And what?
Yes.
Trucks come in to be, the trailers are effectively containers that are coming in to be repaired. You repair them on the site?
Yeah, I have a role with.
The I L A workers?
Yeah.
So that, that's one of the reasons they bring a damaged container. And that, that is a finding of the chip in.
Columbia, sorry. Yeah, correct. I will patch up here to go back up.
And you also said that it's like a reason a trailer in, container in, that you can take one and out.
No, and it actually was, well, we wanted to try. It's very rare to have a container taken out, so there we have him.
That's why I get that.
I must have listened to the speaker, that will drop off, maybe a chassis, a chassis, a naked chassis, and then remove the naked chassis.
And right now, when we get in and out of that site, how do I, traffic, the amount of traffic that occurs between 7 and 4 on that street? God bless you, you haven't had faith out there.
Wouldn't bother me.
Should continue that way till we get you by.
Any other commissioners? Any other questions, please?
I have a question. My next witness is Richard Burrow, Department of Engineering.
Mr. Burrow, as I've heard before, this board removal funds, my comment is that I enjoy your accent, I really do. I'm just going to ask you a standard question, all your licenses and the documentation is up to date in the state of New Jersey?
It is.
You are from all five of us.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Burrow, now you can follow by the fifth piece, provide the overview of the existing conditions at the site, and then along with proposed modifications, proposed as far as this application.
Sir, I'm like this exhibit A1, which is the air filter now of the port area. The site is in the center, exhibit filling in yellow, the northeast corner of intersection of North Avenue East and IKEA Drive. Site's in the heart of Kataski Road, redevelopment, and one of the features of the redevelopment, because of the redevelopment was to improve access to some of the sites, although their goals improved that.
Sorry? Clearly, I was taking you off one percent.
Sorry. One of the goals of the Kataski Road redevelopment is to improve access, which clearly is a hurdle with the application in front of you, you see that. I will leave it there to exhibit A2, which is the exhibit. I hand it over to each of you. This focuses on North Avenue East, which is the portion of the site that focused on with the application. There are two existing driveways that face North Avenue East from the site. Both of those will be closed as part of this application. The new driveway is located approximately 500 feet east of IKEA Drive. It's meant to be as far as we can make it to the east, given the maximum distance, also aligned with the existing driveway that runs through the site. The fourth driveway has been specifically configured for sharp traffic with a large radius of 100 to 140 feet coming in from the east, and 34 feet on the radius to the west. The driveway is 40 feet wide, most is inside the site. There is many buildings that propose this part of the application. What you see on this exhibit is that in truck movements on the driveway are shown on drawing of C N S11, which is part of the package, you can see the driver is being specifically designed with this in mind. And as we mentioned before, in Mr. Benager's letter, there was, what did I mention before? In Mr. Benager's letter, there was a question about potentially installing additional catch bases in the vicinity of the new driveway. There are two existing catch bases in the vicinity of the driveway. And he sent a sketch, Mr. Benager, indicating two additional locations, reading the total of four, which I think in both agree is really the maximum number of catch bases that can be accommodated. That really concludes my testimony on what is a simple application.
And I love that, Mr. Benager, that the, that the site plan does not require any deviation to weight those from the redevelopment plan areas, that's known in this letter, existing setback, but that is, can you confirm that that's not being impacted by this application?
Kid, the building is the existing set by base is only, or is part of the building? That is referencing the set by, existing set by base is on the corner of IKEA Drive and North East Avenue, approximately 400 feet from the driveway.
I have no further questions. Commissioners, any questions to Mr. Burrow, this testimony?
Yeah, I think we have a track. Thank you, Mr. Burrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrow. I'd like to have Paul Martin, sorry. Yes, sir. Certainly, Dan, December 20, B I S A R I O, Linking Engineering, 619 River Drive, Park in Jersey.
Mr. December, you've been here before too, direct to this nice little cell. Same question, all your licenses and all your documents are up to date?
Yes.
Send for me to qualify with this.
And Mr. December, this area has a thesis in that traffic engineering. And Mr. December, you're thinking, obviously, the exhibit has been posted and identified. If you could now, on a traffic engineering standpoint, explain the purpose and of this change in post light along with the safety factors that both Mr. Piddes and Armstrong will be to.
Certainly, now being brief, because much of my thunder is already installed. Much of my thunder has already been installed. No problem. Application. Essentially, what's being proposed is consolidation of existing curbs like all of that into one new driveway that will be located as far east from Kataski Road driveway as possible. It'll be aligned opposite to that one driveway. And we're seeking to revolve a traffic signal to control not only our proposed driveway, but the existing I D I driveway on the south side of North Avenue.
As you've heard, we have been in discussions with the port authority. We will secure a non-injection from that, we have a warrant approval as required by the certain neighbor. And at this point in time, the board has not authored any objections, and they have reviewed our concept plan in our, in terms of the safety, I think it's quite clear that ingress and egress from our side by the I side will extremely benefit from the proposed traffic signal and provide a safer situation that currently exists.
Commissioners, any questions for this witness? Seen none?
We have no further witnesses, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who has any comments or concerns, questions raised regarding this application, so please come forward. Seen none, Commissioner, let's play. Motion to put the application. Second. Motion by Commissioner Navas, seconded by Tassim Walton, Department of State of Ohio.
Tassim Walton?
Aye.
Senator Burton?
Aye. Aye.
Any technical issues, to adjourn?
Thank you very much.
Everybody's seconded.